Calling to order the Monday, June 5th regular meeting of the 36th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro-Tim Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Gravlin? Councilmember Kodeckel? Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. The first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Turbrack with support, but Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And I see Reverend Tal Sullivan is with us this evening. Would you please stand for the invocation?
God, we take this opportunity to begin this council meeting and this privilege that has been given to us by you to invoke your name, the name of the one who was and is and is to come. And God, we declare that we need you and we ask for your blessing. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When an individual has completed their comments, we ask that you refrain from gestures of approval or disapproval because this can be intimidating to some residents. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. And I understand we have a swearing-in item coming up. So we'll do that now.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, families of the promoted officers. I've known both of them for a long time and obviously Andrew for a little longer. I remember when he was a little bit younger than he is right now. But at any rate, both Lieutenant Hadfield and Lieutenant Miller have done much to benefit the community as well as the department, both as officers and as sergeants. Their promotion signals a different type of role. Not only will they respond as before, but now have the added responsibility of carrying out the directions of the Director of Public Safety through the squad sergeants and the officers. They have the role now of oversight and command. They must also seek out issues before they occur and seek remedies in a proactive manner in addition to solving immediate concerns. They must remember that all we do from an administrative and training standpoint is to support the primary mission, which is first, foremost, and always, service and response to all in our community. I have confidence in them. They have the support of the department. I congratulate both of them and I am very proud of both of them as well. I want to add my personal thanks and congratulations to the both of you.
And I see several of their colleagues outside if they would want to come in and be here for the swearing-in.
Go ahead, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Hadfield.
I, Andrew Hadfield.
Having been duly appointed as a Public Safety Lieutenant for the City of Berkeley.
Having been duly appointed as a Public Safety Lieutenant for the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
And I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, raise your right hand. I, Corey Miller.
I, Corey Miller.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Lieutenant for the City of Berkeley.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Lieutenant for the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do hereby swear that I will support the solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the City of Berkeley in the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
And I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Counsel, thank you very much. I appreciate your trust in me, City Manager. Thank you for your support of myself and Lieutenant Miller. I know that we will hopefully do good things for everybody here. I do want to thank, of course, my family who has suffered over 17 years of getting to this point and many, many hours of work and I couldn't do this without them. So to the guys that are here with us and that have got me here and to the family, thank everybody at City of Berkeley. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I too just want to say thank you. I'd also like to thank my family for helping me through this process and my colleagues for supporting me and I look forward to my new role. Thank you.
On behalf of the residents, we certainly would like to congratulate both of you on this important role in our city. You have the finest public safety department in the country and we want to keep it that way and I know you guys, your leadership will continue that very fine performance. You don't become the fifth safest city in the state of Michigan just by wishing it to happen. It is the colleagues that you have and the leadership that you provide that makes it so. We are indebted to you for our safety. Thank you.
I thought they came for us.
I'm here to present the trophies from Berkeley Days and also to thank the city and all of the city employees who helped to make Berkeley Days. I will just tell you guys, DPW, fantastic. They are the greatest bunch of people and the people that you guys have over at Parks and Rec are absolutely outstanding. As a citizen, as someone who runs a pretty big event at Berkeley Days, we couldn't do it without those groups and they're fantastic and I just hope that you guys all realize how absolutely amazing they all are and I know you do, but just wanted to say it publicly. That being said, we do have the trophy here for the softball game and Mom and Dad's club won just by a little bit. Thirty-four to sixteen. It was close. It was close, you guys. It was fun to watch. I think we had more people there to watch the game this year than we've had in the past. So that was fantastic. So I will be displaying this. And then there's the other one that I'll just put over there with it.
Take it back. I'm okay with that.
No, and then we have our annual competition between the Berkeley Days Committee and City Council and you guys did win this year, so congratulations from the Berkeley Days Committee. We're going to start practices. But no, the entire event was great. Nothing we can do about the weather, but the event itself was great. We ended up raising tens of thousands of dollars for the various charities within the city and I think all in all, it was a successful event. We will be starting our meetings back up again the third week in September. We did already meet to go kind of go over everything that happened and what we can do to make it better, what could be a little different. So anybody who's interested in joining the committee, we meet at the Community Center at 7 o'clock the third Wednesday of the month. So we would welcome anybody who's interested to come join us. And I will either present these to you or I can go set them in their place of honor in City Hall.
I think a place of honor for the
Harsh shoes. The softball one can go away.
All right, well, I'll just, I'll show you that we really did put council's name on it, sitting right there. Again, so, thank you all very much.
It was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It takes a lot of work to put on Berkeley Days. The work of a lot of people and of course, under Denise's leadership and we are grateful for all you do for that event and for our city. Thank you very, very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barrett Henson. I'm an owner at Berkeley Fit Body Boot Camp. I'm here with my also owner and business partner, David Smith. Our location is south of Catalpa, right off of Coolidge Highway. Philanthropy is a big part of what we do, not just health and wellness. We have a big passion of helping people achieve things in the health and wellness atmosphere individually and we enjoy coaching. We enjoy helping our clients achieve lots of things and philanthropy goes hand in hand with that. We had 10 of our members, myself included, that went down to Costa Rica most recently in a philanthropic event where we helped really work hand in hand with locals in building a sustainable permaculture farm. It was a great way to volunteer, give back and help a community that was in need. All the while down there, achieving some individual, soul searching and things like that, we came back and it was pretty moving. Oftentimes, we think about the hardships that we might have here and it just kind of allows you to really appreciate things. Again, philanthropy is really big with us and during that time, we kind of overlooked something that maybe we haven't been doing here and something that we really want to start branching out to do and that's helping give back to our local community here in Berkeley. We have about 300 members and in talking with them, just the pictures, everything was so great and the majority of the responses that we had had was, oh, I really wish I could have done that. I wish I could have went down, taken a week off, kind of had that opportunity. But the reality is, it's not an option for everyone, taking that much time and investing to go down and do that, to give back to a community down there. But something here that is sustainable, that's something that we'd really like to work with the City of Berkeley to do. We'd like to come up, work with the City Council, the City Manager, to really find a sustainable project that some of our members, and I know that we have a very big family, community oriented base here in Berkeley, would love to give back to a project or other projects, a sustainable one, or working with you guys, whatever makes the most sense, to really give back and help continue that mission of giving back to what this city has done for us and we're indebted to that and we really love it and we'd love to sit down and take some time and work together with you guys to help put something on paper that can be sustainable for the years to come.
Thank you, Barrett.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Joshua Hunter. I live on President Thomas. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I had the opportunity to watch the Citizens Advisory Committee last month where they were discussing the Community Center and StanTech was presenting the proposals and I was surprised to see the proposals they offered to the committee because they were surprisingly costly and they seemed really out of scope from what I was expecting. I believe the original estimate for a new community center and arena back in December was $14 million, but the new estimates from StanTech for an arena and a community center is now $23 to $27 million for an arena and a community center. The least costly option they presented was with no pool or arena and that alone would be 13 to 17 million dollars just to construct. As I'm sure you're all aware of the 2009 Community Center vote, that voters voted down by 70% and that was a $15 million project. So I guess I'm worried that we're not seeing more projects that are more in scope of what the community expects. I know the survey back in January, there was a majority support of a millage, but there weren't any costs presented in that survey. So I think StanTech should present different proposals that are more in line with what residents expect. For instance, how much would a 10,000 square foot facility, what would that look like? Their least costly one is 40 to 55,000 square feet. Or how much would a $5 million community center function? I think having those proposals from StanTech would give more realistic options and I think residents should have a better understanding of all the options out there, not just the ones that are so costly. And finally, a different topic, I sent several questions to the City Manager before the budget meeting last month and most of those were answered, but I had one in particular I'd like to answer and it's regarding public safety's proactive activities, mainly their patrol activities. I'd particularly like to know how many miles of side streets that they patrol daily and if there's an increased presence shortly or after school hours. There's been reports of stranger danger and speeding vehicles during those hours and I think understanding what, how those patrols work will give parents peace of mind as their kids are going to and from school. So I think that puts their minds at ease or maybe prioritize different activities. So in any case, I hope to hear back answers to those questions. Thank you.
Mayor, council members. My name is Stacy and I've lived in Berkeley now since 2008 and I want to start off by saying that some neighbors and I had some concerns that we addressed with our Chief of Police on Friday and we saw action taking place on Saturday. But I told them that I would come today to kind of present some of our mutual concerns and so I wanted to do that. I actually live on Catalpa, right across from the high school, and most of the neighbors that I approached were between Mortison and Coolidge, so a pretty short section of the street. And I think it was over Labor Day week, or no, excuse me, it was the last weekend, Memorial Day weekend. I had noticed myself the ramping up of speeders on the street. It's seven days a week. It's not during, just during, I don't think it's students because it's happening during school hours. And I finally got so fed up, I put my shovel and my hoe down and I was all covered in dirt and I just said, I'm going knocking door to door. And within a half an hour, I got about 25 signatures who also said the same thing. Some of them had lived on the street for 10-plus years, some of them had only been there a few years, but they too felt like they were seeing excessive speeding, trouble getting out of their driveways, if someone's only going 25 or so, there's no reason that we should have to be concerned about that. The issues seem to be occurring more during the weekdays, maybe between 9:00 and after rush hour and on the weekends later in the afternoon. They also wanted me to say that, again, we don't think these are students. These are people that they feel are using Catalpa to bypass 25 Mile and 11 Mile because our police department is on 12 Mile and Huntington Woods patrols 11 Mile pretty closely. So they think these are people just using us as a passway. They did have a few suggestions, one of which was putting up another stop sign at Mortison and Catalpa, which would mean putting three stop signs in between Woodward and Coolidge, which doesn't make sense. We should not need three stop signs. The other was speed bumps, which I know that costs money and may not necessarily be financially feasible. So I decided to call our police office. I've never called them before, wasn't even sure they were, which is a testament to them that we never have to complain about very much around here. But Chief North, the next day, Saturday afternoon, my mother came down from Lansing and we had gotten back from the market and I saw Berkeley's finest pulling over car after car after car. We actually sat out on our front porch and watched them tag team, catching them from the east and the west. And then when I looked down a little ways, I saw another of our neighbors, they were doing the same thing, just sitting on their porch, watching our law enforcement in action. So we definitely support our men and women. Do we have any women in blue?
Yes.
We support our men and women in blue and our chief. And like I said, I shared the list with Chief North, but I did want to come here and speak. Hey, I met a whole bunch of people I've never met in my life and I think of the 25 people I asked, 24 of them signed enthusiastically. So we support our law enforcement. I appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one else come into the microphone, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 36th City Council meeting on Monday, May 15, 2017. Budget work session on Monday, May 8, 2017, and budget work session on Tuesday, May 9, 2017. Ordinance number 00217, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Article 1 and add a new Article 4 to Chapter 22 Animals of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to permit, regulate, and establish requirements relating to the keeping of chickens. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Now, it is not usual for any comment to happen at this point, but I see some people here with an interest in this matter of chickens. So if there is anyone who wants to come to the microphone to make any comment, seeing none, then we move along. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one?
Recognizations and presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, then Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two?
Motion number M4117, matter of approving a Berkeley Junior Women's Club event, Robina Rhapsody, on Robina from 12 Mile to the alley north of 12 Mile Road from 5:30 PM to 10 PM on the following Thursdays, June 15, 2017, July 20, 2017, August 24, 2017, and September 14, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve M4117?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Turbrack. Support by Mayor Pro-Tim Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the time again to start planning for Robina Rhapsody. The juniors put on this great annual event. This item has been, it was gone in front of each of our departments. They've each reviewed them. There's been no feedback from any of the departments, any cause for concern. I did want to note that should have been included in your packet. Councilmember Blanchard, of course, was very diligent in asking why those approvals were not reflected in there, but I did want to note that they were reviewed. There were no comments offered in those departments and that's why. But of course, Denise is here to say a lot more good things about the bands and the times.
I'm here to answer any questions that anyone has, but just to remind you, this is a free event that the Berkeley Junior Women's Club and the DDA both put on. We close off the street, the band comes up and we have events for kids, there's chalk, there's temporary tattoos, people bring their lawn chairs, there's a bubble machine and it's so much fun to watch everybody come out and sit and just listen to the fantastic music. Last summer, you could pretty much guarantee the third Thursday of every month, there was a huge horrible thunderstorm every single month. So hopefully we'll have better results this year. We have lined up two of the bands and we've tentatively set up the other ones, but on June 15, we've already lined up pending approval, Metro Rock Way will be playing. On July 20, we have set up Bullet for Joey and you might have seen them at Berkeley Days. They were very well received. It was a lot of fun to hear them at Berkeley Days. We're also looking at Madigan's Attic for one of the other dates. So I know those are all local favorites. Like I said, it's a free event. We just need people to come on down and bring their lawn chairs and listen to the fantastic music, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions, discussions? It's a wonderful event. Great community event.
Been going on for years and been no problems. It's a great event for the city.
It is. Mayor Pro-Tim Baker?
Much the same. Again, just comments as in compliments. Events are very well structured and well advertised. They're run very smoothly and they're a lot of fun. I've had neighbors and folks ask me about them already again heading into this season, so I'm very pleased to support this against tonight and to help support you and the team for all the things that you do.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M4117?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M4217, matter of approving a special use approval to Robin and Mark Coden, 3015 12 Mile, to establish a resale shop.
Is there a motion to approve M4217?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro-Tim Baker with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the city zoning ordinance, resale shops are a special land use in the downtown district. Some Girls Boutique did go through the beginning portion of that process. They applied first to the Planning Commission, as is the proper way. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and then made a recommendation of approval to the City Council on approving the special land use. You have included in your packets the matter in which the Planning Commission addressed the specific questions that, as is their task to go over, and they did ultimately decide that a positive recommendation was best for this case. The applicant is here if you have any questions for you.
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm Robin.
You're welcome, Robin.
Hi.
Tell us a little bit about the business.
So the business is based off of a blog that I've been writing for my girls for about six years now, I think. I think I started writing in 2011. It's called Dim Sum and Donuts. It's just something for them to have when they become adults. It's parenting and adoption and it's just, it's to empower them when they get older. And well, I'll just tell you a little, now that I'm already standing up here, you might as well know the deal. My mom's mom passed away when she was very young and my mom doesn't have a lot of memories to go with her mom, so I wanted to make sure just in case something happens, my girls are set. So it's several years and posts and articles with life lessons in them. And over the years, it has spread and grown and we've built a very cool audience of good people. And for the last year or so, I tried to come up with a business idea where I could include my girls because I would like them to have some sort of a work ethic and I wanted to do it as a family. I wanted to do it as a family. In my other job, they're just, they're not included, so it's, I wanted to do something where they were going to be a part of it. So we came up with the idea of the boutique, and it, it goes perfectly with the blog, and it fits in with the girl empowerment theme and all the things that I write about. And it would be mostly for the people, the type of person who reads the blog will probably be the type of person who shops at the store, and those are the people we want to be with. So, do you want to know what kind of store it is?
Please.
Okay. So, I'm very excited about it, if you can't tell. I've been doing the same job for 20 years. In fact, the officers that were given props tonight, I don't even know why, I didn't know what you guys were talking about, but they're my clients from my other business. So, I'm already feeling very protected, because I already know most of them. But, uh, the business is gently worn and new clothing, accessories, wearables for tweens, teens, and adult ladies. So, we could have a girl who's going out on her first date, a girl that's going to prom, a mother and a daughter in there together, a mother and a daughter who don't want to be in there together. We will take everybody, and we will make everybody feel comfortable. If they're cool to us, we will be cool to them. It's going to be really good. We're going to do good things, only good things.
Very good. Are there any questions, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I thank you for your enthusiasm and for the story and for, for finding a way to, um, uh...
My husband's going to be watching this, he's going to be like, oh my God.
Oh, boy. No, I think that's, uh, I think that's super cool. Uh, can you tell us a little bit more about where you're, where you would be located, what your hours of operation?
Yes.
You know, if somebody wanted to find you apart from the blog, how would they go, you know, that kind of stuff?
Yes. And our website is up and running, too.
Sure.
As of this week. I'm very excited about that as well. So, the hours, okay, the location is 3015 12 Mile, right by Robina Rhapsody, which I'm very excited about now. Um, I hope I can go. It's where Armadillo Printing was. So we're going in and we are just, we're going to make it awesome. We've got a killer designer who I work really well with, I've worked with him on another project, turned out amazing. This place is going to be so flipping cute, I, I, I can't, I'm so excited, I can't even freaking sleep at night. I mean, look how I'm dressed. This is like where my head is right now. I'm so excited about this place. Um, what was your other, oh, hours. Okay, I do know my hours. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 11 to 7, or 11 to 6, 11 to 6. The hours will probably change, you know, depending on what the weather's like. When it's nice out, I'm going to be, want to be open later and party a little bit, but when it's cold out, I might want to go home. So we'll see, depending on weather restrictions. And then Mondays closed, because Mondays are just, no one likes Mondays. Sundays, especially during, I'm sorry, nobody does. I, just Mondays are just, this Monday has been horrible, except for right this minute. Um, we don't even know, Mondays are just rough. Sunday, definitely when it's nice out, I want to be open on Sundays, because I feel like people are out and about in Berkeley. Um, we've done a lot of reconnaissance work to see who's walking around on what days, and every day's a good shopping day, except Monday. Monday, I'm out. But other than that, and I'll probably be there anyway, working, just not working.
Very good.
Nice. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, simply you're in, oh...
Just a comment, Your Honor. I, I read this, and I went back and viewed the, the planning commission meeting, and I called my wife over, my fashion consultant, and said, "Take a look at this, tell me what you think." And she, as the grandmother of three young ladies, she said, "Great idea." So, she said, "You should look into that in great detail and make sure it happens."
That makes me so happy. I'm happy. We've worked really hard, we wrote a great business plan, and even I cry when I read the business plan, it's good. We're going to do good things. We're going to, we're going to get some girls who don't feel like they fit in, we're going to make them feel confident, and we're going to make the confident girls, we're going to humble them, we're going to, we're going to do good things.
Very good.
We got this.
Very good. Well, then, we need to get along and pass this motion so that you can do all that.
Yes, please, you cannot hold me up.
That's right. So, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-4217?
Am I all done?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now you've got a favorable vote.
There you go.
Gone already.
And she's gone already.
She's already have to do work.
Very good. Well, we'll move on to the next item, then. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-4317, matter of approving the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, mural program guidelines.
Is there a motion to approve M-4317?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, by Mayor Protem Baker, with support by Councilmember Terbrack. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the Downtown Development Authority is interested in increasing the aesthetics of their district. Um, just a reminder, that district runs on 12 Mile between Greenfield and Coolidge, and Coolidge between 11 and 12 Mile. Um, so they're, they've developed now a set of guidelines that would work in harmony with the city's code, um, but it actually would have, the DDA is the approving body, uh, specifically the design committee within the DDA, as an approving body for murals that are installed in the district. Outside of that district, the normal zoning, uh, zoning approval process would be in place inside the district. Um, the city would actually allow the DDA to be the approving body on that. Uh, you have the guidelines included in your packet, uh, they've been reviewed by City Attorney's Office, uh, were developed through the work of the design committee for the DDA. Of course, Vivian Carmody's here, our DDA Executive Director. But, um, what it is, it's a, uh, the design committee is made up of actually members of various fields, uh, various backgrounds, they would actually get together and approve whether or not the mural's appropriate for the district. Um, as far as the timing goes, we have the opportunity to sort of see this in practice almost immediately with the upcoming Street Art Festival that's being jointly hosted by the Chamber of Commerce as well as the Development Authority. So, we have a chance to put this into practice very quickly and see, uh, whether or not it is, it fits the needs of our, our downtown district, so. Vivian, are there any additional items to add to that?
Well, Matt, you covered it so thoroughly, I, just like my whole speech is gone. Uh, but like Matt said, you know, we're just trying to really look strategically at how we're approaching every aspect of downtown, you know, and, and this is, the visual aspect is huge, and, uh, we know these murals are coming, and we know murals have been happening, and we want to facilitate that process and make sure there's a, uh, a process in place that encourages, uh, good public art, as well as facilitates, you know, a process to move that through. So that's the whole point, um, you know, we'll actually have, the design committee, uh, has a public art committee, um, that will make recommendations, they'll, they'll be the ones who initially recommend up to the design committee that, you know, these should be approved, and then they'll go to the board. So there's a, you know, there's a multi-step process in place. As Matt said, our design committee, we've got, uh, you know, planning commission members on it, architects, we've got, um, local business owners, artists, so, you know, each of these committees, the standing committees, and we're really trying to be very thoughtful about making sure that all those stakeholders and those people who have the key expertise to help make these decisions are included on those, um, committees. So, and I think the design committee is, is very representative of that. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer, but like Matt said, we, clock is ticking.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for all you do with the DDA. Uh, the, um, positive, um, feedback we've already received from the business owners speaks to the energy and positivity that you bring, and this is yet another example of those, of that thoughtful leadership that you're providing to us. So these are the, the guidelines that we're looking at today. Can you describe the process if somebody wanted to go about, um, exercising these guidelines to put a mural in place?
Yes, we actually just talked about this, because Bridget's here, who is the Chair of the, um, Street Art Fest Committee, and so, uh, we have an application that we send out, um, uh, the business owner would fill that out along with the artist, they would submit that to me, I bring it to the public art committee who reviews it, if they feel like, um, you know, maybe something needs to be tweaked, or, uh, whatever, then they can work back with the artist. We have no intentions of trying to art direct, but we certainly want to make sure that the art that comes into our district is, you know, the best art we can get. It is public art, and, um, it's in our public space. Uh, and then meantime, we make sure that, you know, the property owner has no outstanding warrants for his arrest, or whatever, or people prowling in the alleys, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, just to make sure that everything is, uh, you know, um, the way it should be. And we can address then, you know, public rights issues, or, uh, you know, public right-of-way issues, not public rights, I guess, that's a whole nother subject we don't even want to talk about. But, um, uh, you know, so, so we've got that oversight there to look at every aspect of, of painting this, of going through this process, rather than just saying, okay, this mural can go up and, you know, or, you know, what's happening now is murals go up, and, and they're good murals, but, you know, they're not going up with any, any oversight, so we, we, we just want to kind of facilitate and help that whole process.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Art. Would you explain a little bit, uh, to make sure people understand that this is art, not advertisement?
Yeah, well, it is art, so it's public art, um...
But they're not allowed to stop to advertise their business in the art?
Well, I, I will not say that there won't, you know, if a, if a building owner, I mean, there may be an aspect of his business, but it's not going to be clearly, okay, Joe Blow's, you know, pop stand or whatever, but, um, you know, there might be an aspect of that business that's incorporated visually in a very cool way, but if it's not done well, you know, it's not going to get by our, our committee, so. Um, I mean, we're, we're really trying to be thoughtful about that. We don't want to discourage, um, good artwork, uh, and there's some very, very thoughtful stuff that is done where it incorporates aspects of a business, but the other thing about this is we're looking for, you know, long-term. I mean, we're saying that we want this to be up, you know, for a good five years, so, uh, you know, I, I think most business owners, knowing that, I, I, I mean, A, I think if, if they're investing and, and we know they're a strong business and they want to incorporate something, then, I mean, we're willing to look at it, but it's not going to be their names, it's, you know.
Very good. Mr. Baumgarten?
I had a similar question about that, um, and Vivian actually provided me a great example, the America's Coin and Stamp Shop has a mural there that does feature coins, does feature stamps, but is not necessarily a billboard for their business specifically. So that's the kind of thing that I think they're looking at.
I was just concerned, we don't want this to be part of the sign ordinance.
No, no, it won't be, it won't be Eda Jones or anything like that.
No, 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 this is, this is art. I mean, we're, and we're, you know, and that's the other thing, is we want to make sure that this is art that's done to scale, and, you know, that it looks appropriate on that wall, and it's not, you know, something that's, that, that doesn't fit. So, I mean, that's, that's really important to us, because it's all about art downtown. I mean, we want to make it look the best it can. So, um, just speaking of art, I'm going to throw out, like, a shameless plug, don't forget Art and About, Friday night, 6 to 9 PM, all through the DDA District. You guys better be there.
Indeed.
Very good. Anything else on this item? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-4317?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Resolution number R-1717, matter of authorizing the West Nile virus expense reimbursement requests.
Is there a motion to approve R-1717?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by, uh, Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Terbrack. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, um, we're asked that, Derek, explain a little bit about this annual program. It's in its, um, it's been a couple of years old now, and it's been a good program for the city.
Good evening. Uh, this is a program we've worked through now, several straight years. Uh, we collaborate with Oakland County to, uh, as part of West Nile virus prevention, put Larvicide in city catch basins in the public right-of-way. So every spring, DPW staff put a Larvicide briquet, a tablet, in approximately 1,500 catch basins around the city, and that tablet will work for approximately 180 days and prevent, uh, a mosquito from developing, basically prevent those catch basins from being breeding sites, uh, for mosquitoes, and specifically the mosquito that's responsible for the West Nile virus. So, this is part of our annual program, we've completed that work this year. Oakland County reimburses us a small amount on the product that we purchase. Uh, the amount is a little bit less than last year, but, uh, has been a consistent amount, generally speaking, year over year, so, uh, they require this, uh, resolution in order to move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Derek. Any questions? We've been through this every year. Councilmember Terbrack?
Mr. Schuler, how might a resident know if their basin has been treated?
Well, uh, the, the markings that you see on those basins, they traditionally put that little tick mark, uh, on the catch basin, and that's a sign that, that Mike has been to that basin and, and in fact, put the tablet there. We also do those markings, uh, for our own knowledge about where those structures are. We even mark the sidewalk as well, so that we know where those basins are, so that's part of, uh, our process as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion on this, uh, thank you for, um, doing this work.
Thank you, Mayor, and we are receiving approximately $1,900, uh, for that expense.
From the county?
That's correct.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1717?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M-4417, matter of approving the purchase of a 2017 four-ton asphalt recycler and hot box trailer at a total cost of $35,881.74 from Falcon Road Maintenance Equipment, LLC.
Is there a motion to approve M-4417?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick process note before turning it over to Derek, this is a budget item, we were planning on this expenditure, and, uh, it comes to you as do most of the, the purchases of this nature. Uh, we actually put it out on mitten and received a number of bids to, to make sure that we were getting the best price possible.
Ms. Schuler?
Thank you, Matt. So we put this item in our CERP, our Capital Equipment Replacement Plan, uh, for this asphalt trailer, um, heated trailer essentially, and I view this as a piece of equipment that's going to increase our flexibility at the DPW. This is a new piece of equipment for us. Uh, to my knowledge, we have not had, uh, asphalt trailer before, so this will give us the ability, uh, during the summer months, to purchase hot mix asphalt from a plant and bring that into Berkeley, and have our staff do utility patches. Uh, we could use it for potholes, we can use it for cold patch and, and heating cold patch in the wintertime, uh, when it gets very cold as well, it can be used then. Uh, so it really increases our flexibility, so that we're not solely reliant on an outside contractor for this type of work. So, we're looking forward to the new machine and trying it out, and, and we really hope that, uh, the hot mix asphalt will give us, uh, you know, longer durability when it comes to those patches.
Very good. Any questions on this, or, Derek? Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I noticed in here, uh, this is coming with a two-year warranty, but then there was some other things that were going along with that?
Yeah, this is a unique, uh, this particular, the lowest qualified bidder actually offered a two-year warranty above the traditional one-year warranty that we see, so we looked favorably upon that. There's also a lifetime warranty on the, the structure of the trailer, the frame itself, and then there's a combustion chamber that has a five-year warranty on it. So, they're really, uh, they're going to service this thing, they're going to live with it, and, and we're excited to see that for this particular unit.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. For Tem Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Building on that, um, again, thanks for making sure that we have, uh, the right kinds of equipments that we can provide these services rapidly and, and professionally. Uh, to that end, is there, can you describe a little bit about training? I can't, I don't imagine you just like turn this thing on and start like a lawnmower or something.
That is correct, and we will need training, and it is part of the bid that the, uh, the manufacturer provide onsite training. So, when they deliver the trailer, we'll have training for all of our staff on how to use it. Uh, in addition, they'll give us all the manuals and do that sort of thing, but we'll act, we'll get training on it. We have demoed this particular unit, uh, so, uh, we have employees that have actually already been in the field trying it out as well. So, but they will off, definitely need to get training on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think this is a very useful piece of equipment. Valuable for so many things. Jack?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just one thing, this is from a local Michigan company, and what impressed me is delivery time is one week.
Yeah.
Ninety days from the other bid.
Yeah, I kind of believe it when I see it. I saw that as well, and, but they are, they said they can have it here in approximately one week, so, with, time will tell. I'll let you know.
Yeah, the other company was 90 days, so.
Right, I saw that. Very good. Then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-4417?
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Ordinance Number O-0417, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 6, Division 2, Model Glue of the City Berkeley, of the Berkeley City Code to broaden the prohibition of sniffing and huffing vapors to cover other chemical agents besides model glue.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, Ordinance O-417?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Blanchard, with support by Counselor Terbrach. Mr. Baumgarten, I know this comes in a line of, uh, ordinances to bring our system into compliance with the state.
Correct.
Whatever you need to say to help us understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, from time to time, we work with our, um, Attorney's Office and the Public Safety Department. They move through our ordinances, make sure that they are serving the community well, make sure they're consistent with state law. Uh, so, the next seven or so items to come before you do just that. Uh, there are updates to either better serve the community, or there are updates to bring our existing ordinances into line with the, uh, with state law. Um, I don't know if the preferences to go through these individually or not, um, but, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Christ or, uh, Chief North want to speak to any of these individually, but, um, broadly speaking, that's what we're doing here tonight.
Well, we'll take them one by one.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so, the first one up, uh, is there anything to be added? Are there any questions? Everybody has had the opportunity to, to read this. Does Chief want to, um, come to the microphone and be available for any questions on the vapors and sniffing and glue and all of that? What does that do?
Unfortunately, we have a situation where people engage in various forms of substance abuse. Our local ordinance was specific to model glue. Unfortunately, people sometimes engage in other substances, and therefore, we needed the ordinance to cover that. We did have a situation where a situation occurred with another substance which caused a traffic crash. Uh, this helps us with prosecution of individuals. Uh, you know, it provides also through the prosecution, uh, not only that end of, uh, but opportunity for treatment, uh, but we need to be up to speed for things other than specifically model glue.
Very good. Any questions? Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is probably for Mr. Christ. Uh, Section 82, 213, possession or transfer of, for unlawful purpose. Uh, that sentence was not changed at all, and it ends with, or receive possession of any model glue. My question was, shouldn't that also say, or, uh, or chemical agent? We should add that in there?
That would be recommended, yes, because the, the, the concept here is there was a gap with respect to the ordinance as it relates to other chemical agents, and, and so that, uh, with respect to the second reading should be clarified.
Okay. So, we'll make that change then for the second reading?
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions on this?
Well, there are other instances of the term model glue in there, but I don't know that they need to be changed. Uh, we have 82, 214. Uh, we may want to look at those in that section because, see whether should, and other chemical agents should be added.
Very good. So, anything else on this? So, then, uh, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-417?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Boucher, number eight, please.
Ordinance Number O-0517, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 6, Division 3, Controlled Substances of the City, of the Berkeley City Code to modify and supplement definitions and prohibitions relating to drug paraphernalia.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance O-517?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Stedman, support by Counselor Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of council. The, uh, updates are included in your packet, uh, showing the current and the updated formats for the ordinance. Uh, Chief North, is there anything to add to this or any items to note specifically?
No, just that we're getting consistent with where we need to be, given the, uh, ever-changing situation with, uh, drug enforcement.
Very good. Any questions? Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is pretty much, uh, lift right out of the state regulations, isn't it? Uh, we just pulled it out and put it in here to make sure we got everything covered, because I, I read both of them, and it looked like it, uh, it was pretty thorough on that, so, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on this item? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-517?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Ordinance Number O-0617, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 8, Division 3, Curfew of the Berkeley City Code to increase the age of minors subject to curfew from under 16 to under 17 years old.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance O-717?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Stedman, with support by Counselor Terbrach. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I believe this item is, uh, being updated to make it consistent with state law and...
Right. Any questions, discussion on this? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-717?
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10?
Ordinance Number O-0717, matter of, considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 3, Section 8271, assault and assault and battery, domestic violence at the Berkeley City Code, of the Berkeley City Code, to make assault and battery a 93-day misdemeanor to correspond to the state law penalty.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, Ordinance O-717?
Motion to approve.
Support?
Support, uh, motion to approve by Counselor Blanchard, with support by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Any discussion on this one? Uh, Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this one and the next one, uh, this one, we're changing the, uh, the punishment from 90, 90 days to 93 days, and I just wondered why, because on the next one, it's, it's 90 days. Uh, is there any consistency, or what is the logic behind, uh, why we're doing this?
If I could, through the chair, there are certain state statutes that provide a specific penalty. Uh, assault and battery and domestic violence is one that state law provides for a 93-day consequence, potential jail fine. And also, as it relates to, in the context of an arrest, uh, with a 93-day, uh, misdemeanor, there's a reporting issue that would not get picked up on a 90-day misdemeanor. And to make it consistent with state law, that's why this proposed change is being recommended.
Okay. It's a little confusing in reading this. I wasn't sure what was what, but, uh, that clears it up. Thank you very much.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Uh, thank you. I had a similar timing question, so I appreciate that. Um, just a technical correction on the Section 3 penalty. The second line, uh, it talks about sentence of not more than 90, but then in parentheses, it says 93, so we probably just want to put that in there as well.
Good catch. Thank you.
Just for that one, yeah.
Very good. Any other items, corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-717?
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11?
Ordinance Number 0817, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 and add Section 82-122 to Article 4 of the City of Berkeley Code to prohibit prowling about an alley or private premises in the nighttime without authority or permission from the owner.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance O-817?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Stedman, with support by Counselor Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, I will actually defer to Chief North on this.
Well, we'll, I'll work also with Mr. Christ on this one. This ordinance gives us an opportunity, uh, should the need arise, to engage in enforcement for situations which do not involve a trespass. Uh, these are situations where people are in someone's backyard in the middle of the night, and, uh, they don't live there, they don't belong there, and it gives us an opportunity to engage in enforcement action to safeguard the community.
That makes sense. Any questions? Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Uh, thank you. Is there, um, maybe it's defined elsewhere that what it actually means to prowl, is that like with your back hunched over, or is there, I mean, is there, is there specific, if you're, if you're like, I'm, I'm not prowling, I'm, I'm looking for my cat? You know, is there, is there, uh, I mean, do we define, I mean, obviously, there's the common sense, you know, type of...
Yeah, it's basically being where you're not supposed to be, and you're probably not up to very much good.
Sure, sure. And, uh, and I was told, actually, the timing of this is pretty neat. There's Facebook thing going around right now, and I haven't seen it, but people saying there's somebody dressed up like a clown out there right now doing this very thing. So, does this apply to clowns?
Well, it, well, first of all, no one has reported any clowns to the police department.
All right, so, uh...
It's the street, people call Facebook, not us, so, we don't have any confirmation.
I think they should be calling you and not Facebook, but, uh...
That's absolutely right.
Apparently, it's, uh, it's, you know, all the raids these days who dress up like a clown and prowl, so, uh, this, this would help us with those kinds of things as well, right?
Well, if we should have to look at additional part of the ordinance, perhaps, we could, uh, work on that if there's clown attire.
Well, hopefully, red nose is not required to be under the, uh, the, the long arm of the law here in the city, so. I'd, but I just, I'm just curious, I mean, partially just, because, you know, it's not fun when, when folks have this kind of thing happening around them, but, I guess I appreciate the spectacle of somebody choosing to dress up.
Clown attire or not, it's, it's an unsettling experience.
Oh, for sure.
We should probably take a look at it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, without clowning around about this, I think this is an important, uh, I think this is important work, and I'm glad that we have this extra tool, uh, to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rick.
What if the clowns are the ones on Facebook? Um, any other discussion on this? Uh, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-817?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read Ordin, uh, item number 12?
Ordinance Number O-0917, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 122, Traffic and Vehicles of the Berkeley City Code to add Article 5, Motor Carrier Safety.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance O-917?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Counselor Terbrach. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, this one is actually outlined by state law, but, um, municipalities voluntarily choose for themselves to adopt it. Uh, motor carrier units, or motor carrier safety applies specifically to truck hauling and, uh, large-weighted vehicles, that, uh, we give the city the ability, uh, in another arm of enforcement on our major thoroughfares, such as, uh, any commercial corridors, but also, I believe, some of the residential roads as well, right?
Yeah, this involves any type of commercial vehicle, which allows us to further enforce, uh, bills of lading, uh, paperwork, number of hours driven, uh, anything up to, uh, we don't have scales, and we don't have anywhere to weigh trucks like they do in other city departments that have a specific officer for motor vehicle enforcement, but we will be, we'll do everything else. And should an emergency or situation arise, we could call upon someone else in the, in the weight, that would be unusual circumstance, but it gives us, it gives us, uh, an ability to protect our roads and, and people that are driving down them if there's any issues involving safety, especially with trucks.
Very good. Any other, Counselor Blanchard?
Thank you, Art. This, this has been discussed for, for a long time, and I think it's, it's about time we got into this, because it's, there's a lot of vehicles. We have a lot of, we have Woodward, we have Coolidge, we have Greenfield, those are commercial corridors, we have 12 Mile, we have 11 Mile, and we need to be prepared to enforce these truck laws if we find violators are endangering our citizens. Thank you.
I, I think you're exactly right. Um, a lot of trucks come up Coolidge to bypass going out to Woodward and coming north. Uh, you know, it's a quick cutoff, and while this may not deter that, it certainly will give us more opportunity to question. Anything else on this item?
Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-917?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 13?
Ordinance Number O-1017, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 7, Section 82-279, and add Section 82-284, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Berkeley City Code to designate the offense of carrying concealed weapons without a license as a misdemeanor and to prohibit possession or use of firearms or other dangerous weapons while under the influence of alcoholic liquor or controlled substances.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1017?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Terbrach, with support by Counselor Member Stedman. Mr. Baumgarten?
Hey, Ms. Mayor, this is one of the cases where we are updating in order to be compliant with state law. Uh, Mr. Christ, do you have anything on this?
Uh, no, just through the chair, I, I did note the punish, punishment provision in this, uh, I believe there is a, uh, further refinement that, that should come back for the second reading as it relates to, uh, the, uh, possession of a concealed weapon while under intoxicated. There's a bifurcated, uh, threshold, not only the .08, but a, a lower threshold of .02, 2.08, that I think should be addressed for your second reading.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Blanchard?
Question, there, thank you. Does this have any impact on open carry? Because I've recently seen open carry in the City of Berkeley, on a couple occasions, so I was just wondering, I took the grandkids out for dinner one night, and there was a gentleman in there with a pistol. So I was just, got me thinking about it.
Through the chair, no, as it relates to the focus of this would be carrying a concealed weapon without a license, concealed weapon. And then the second part of this addresses, should that person, if they had a concealed weapons license and was intoxicated, not an open carry circumstance.
But just following up on that, what about someone with open carry and intoxicated?
That would, that would fall under the possession or use of a firearm by a person under the influence.
Okay, okay.
But not somebody who is solely open carrying.
Okay, right, correct, correct. So there is a provision. Councilmember Terbrack?
I just have a question with some of the language in here. So in section 82-279, we're talking about concealed weapons without a license, and we, it goes on to name a few, a dagger, a dirk, a stiletto, or other dangerous weapons. And I'm wondering why they don't just say dangerous weapons, why do we have to name three types of weapons first?
Those are...
Because later on, in section 82-284, it goes on to mention your daggers, your dirks, your stilettos, but then brass knuckles comes in there as well. Why are we, can't we just say dangerous weapons and cover all of them versus naming four, and then going dangerous weapon? I'm just trying to figure out the parallel structure of why some are here, some are not.
Through the chair, I believe that is the way it is set forth in state law.
State is big on daggers, dirks, stilettos.
Yeah, yeah, those are sure, for sure, in state law. As it relates to why brass knuckles is referenced the second time, I'd have to double check, but I will have that information for the second reading.
Just curious if we could simplify things and not, I mean, I don't know why we have to list things.
Yeah, and by listing some things, if it were then one that wasn't listed, it wouldn't necessarily qualify.
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I was curious about nunchucks, but apparently we'd have to find out something for those down there. But I think just to kind of back to the conversation at hand about open carry versus concealed, as it pertains to, under the influence, it's silent on where the weapon is located, right? If it's concealed or open, regardless, it's not permitted.
It's not permitted if you meet the threshold of under the influence.
Right.
And it's that refinement that is going to come back for the second reading.
Okay.
Right, between the .02 to .08, and then .08 and above.
Very good. Anything else on this item? Very important item. Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on ordinance 1017?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 14?
Motion number M4517, matter of appointing the Public Works Director Derek Schuler as the City of Berkeley's representative and City Manager Matthew Baumgarten as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, SACRA, Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA board.
Is there a motion to approve M4517?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is the first of two items to come before you. It's an annual update to, that SACRA asks that we submit every year who the primary and who the alternate is. Derek Schuler has been the, at the forefront of the recycling issues. He's been the main attendee to these meetings for the last several years, so we're asking to formalize that by making him the primary person and myself the alternate. That is a flip from previous years, but it's in practice. I have a standing conflict with our DDA meetings, so Derek is very knowledgeable, he's up to the forefront. He's also done a great job of, as a board member, leading that board towards the single-stream recycling efforts that are going to be launched next month, so very excited to keep him in that role.
Very good. Any discussion on this item? Pretty apparent. Ms. Boucher, call the roll, please, on ordinance, on M4517?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 15?
Motion number M4617, matter of appointing the Berkeley Public Works Director Derek Schuler as the City of Berkeley's representative and City Manager Matthew Baumgarten as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, SACWA, Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACWA board.
Is there a motion to approve M4617?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, we are requesting to keep the existing structure in place with Derek as the primary, myself as the alternate, whereas SACRA handles recycling issues, SACWA handles water issues and service delivery for the various member communities. Again, Derek's very knowledgeable in this, it's an appropriate position for him.
Any additional discussion on this? Seeing none, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M4617?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and Councilmember Blanchard is up first.
Let me get my list of stuff here. Well, I'll start with water bills. There's been some communications in the Woodward talk about our water bill structure, and I thought I'd try and clarify that tonight, because it was a little confusing. In the past, I might make out a card that lists all the communities in SACWA, and where we rank in cost among all the communities, and we are next to last and have been next to last. Now, this has not been updated yet, because all the communities have not submitted their rates yet, and they'll do that sometime after July 1st, probably. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the water rates. Water rates are made up of four components. Water and sanitary sewer, which is based on usage, and the cost of that is the cost that we get for water from the Great Lakes Water Authority passed through SACWA, so most of our charge on that is just a pass-through. We have a ready-to-serv cost, which is the cost, fixed cost of maintaining the water systems. We have a stormwater charge, which is determined by the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner, so that's something that comes to us, and we pass that through. And then we have the residential refuse, and that fee covers the cost of maintaining the sanitation fund, which includes residential curbside pickup, yard waste pickup, curbside recycle program, curbside branch chip and pickup, curbside leaf pickup, and free hazardous waste pickup for residents. So overall, the City of Berkeley waters, customers will see an 8.6% increase in the annual water and sewer costs for fiscal year 2017 and 2018, and that's basically just a pass-through of rates that come to us from the people we buy the water from and the people that manage our stormwater. When we get the information from all the other cities, they will have to raise their rates on our little chart, and so I'm assuming, based on what I've seen so far, that we will be either next to last, or we may move up one, but we are way down at the bottom. Just to give you comparison, Royal Oaks rate on this chart is $532, our rate is 279 as a comparative rate, so we are very low. So if anybody has any questions about water rates, they can see me, or Derek, or anybody else, and we will get them the answer. Another thing, we had a Veterans Town Hall recently, where we talked to veterans about the veterans' rights. We had 18 veterans come in, we had people from the VAC Legion, the VA, different people come in and answer questions, so it was very good, very successful, got a lot of good compliments on that, so I'm glad that people came. Next, June is Gun Safety Awareness Month. And for those of you that aren't aware, we have gun locks to give away. We have them in public safety. If you need a gun lock, you can go to the window over there and ask for a gun lock, and they will give you one of these, so. Well, we've got quite a bunch of inventory today. We got, that's four boxes upstairs, and I think some downstairs, so we're in pretty good shape. Also, there's another program from Oakland County called Lock It Up Oakland. Guns don't shoot, don't accidentally fire when they're locked up. Safe storage saves lives, and what this is, is a deal through Dunham's for 15% off for a gun safe. These are available over there, that coupon, as you can go to Dunham's and get 15% off a gun safe, so Public Safety Department has that. Just two more items.
Very good.
Saturday, 10 to 6, is the Art Bash downtown, so we'll be seeing a lot of, a lot of extra foot traffic. 12 Mile will be closed from 6:00 in the morning till about 10:00 at night. The Art Bash is actually 10:00 o'clock to 6:00. At the same time, here in this parking lot, we'll be having lids for kids, that goes from 10:00 to 2:00. So we'll be bringing the kids in, hopefully, and training them on how to put on bike helmets correctly, training them on some rules of the road for bikes, and having a number of activities where they'll just have fun. So that's basically what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Just one thing, there's a lot of things coming up in June, and throughout the summer at the library, beginning on June 19th, is the Summer Reading Program. There's going to be summer reading events for children and adults, and it's, and this, the kickoff is Monday, June 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the library. There's going to be an ice cream social, and it's sponsored by the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library, and made possible with this word of Clark's Ice Cream and Royal Popcorn Supply. Guest, our ice cream servers from Vibe Credit Union will be at the event. This year's summer reading theme is Build a Better World, and they will have events for all ages, so look on the website and check out the dates. There's some very interesting things that they're planning. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Great, thank you, Your Honor. Two quick updates as well. First, hopefully, everybody in the city received their copy of the 85th Anniversary Magazine. It was put together by our very own Historical Committee, with tremendous support from all the advertisers contained therein, to help sponsor the production and delivery of this material. It's wonderful to celebrate the 85th anniversary of Berkeley as a city, and hopefully, if you've had a chance to review this, if you haven't, or if you'd like another copy, we have them in City Hall, we have them at the library, we have them in the museum, those types of things that you can enjoy, and position us for another 85 years of success as a community as well.
And it was at no cost to the city?
No cost to the city, no cost to the city. Yep, just paid for completely by the advertisers and distributed as such. And recently, our Detroit Magazine, they have a The Way It Was section towards the end of the magazine, and the very, our very own Berkeley Downtown, 1959, was featured in this issue, so it was great to see that our heritage is welcomed and celebrated in a magazine that gets a pretty good distribution around the region as well. So that's wonderful news, and thanks again to our committee, and Jeff Tong in particular, for being so diligent in helping find these photos, researching them so thoroughly, engaging with the community, and helping share those for everybody to enjoy. And finally, it was Yogi Berra who once said, "No one goes there nowadays, it's too crowded." Again, no one goes there these days, it's too crowded. And if we didn't know any better, he might have been talking about our very own downtown Berkeley. Because of the kinds of events that we have, it is just so delightfully crowded these days. As was mentioned earlier, the Art Bash is this Saturday. As a warm-up or preview to that, we have our first art and about here, as mentioned at the onset of our meeting tonight. It'll be the second Fridays from June to October, from 6:00 to 9:00, throughout our entire downtown, so it includes the area where the Art Bash will be, plus the west side of 12 Mile and the entirety of Coolidge as well. The opportunity here is for folks to, for the business owners to partner with the diverse group of artists. We talk about fine art, performance art, garage bands, and buskers, and everything in between. And so, again, it's another wonderful opportunity, free event, for folks to come out, enjoy, get to meet some new folks, see some wonderful artwork, and enjoy all that our downtown has to offer. And in this particular weekend, it's wonderful, because you'll have the back-to-back event, so we're very excited that these worked out together well, and we look forward to an incredible series of these, plus, as we talked about, the Rubina Rhapsodies and things. We have a lot of great things going on in our downtown, we're very excited about all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate our city manager on his first year in the City of Berkeley. We have reached that anniversary. I also want to congratulate Lieutenant Hatfield and Lieutenant Miller, again, on their promotions today. They are tremendous officers, tremendous leaders, and certainly tremendous ambassadors for our city and for our Public Safety Department, and surprisingly decent softball players as well.
If they stay healthy.
Especially in Lieutenant Miller's case, he did stay healthy this year, it's the first time he made it through the game. And while we're talking about that, I do want to thank the Berkeley Days Committee, certainly Denise and the entire crew, on just another wonderful event. You know, the Midway, and the beer arena, and everything else that, you know, allows our residents to come and celebrate the City of Berkeley. Weather was, was okay, except for about 3:00 on Saturday, 3:15, it got a little chilly in the dunk tank, which you followed in there. But no, tremendous event, I know how much work goes into planning Berkeley Days, and for, as Denise said, they're going to start meeting again in September, and that's the amount of time that it takes, so certainly, everybody that was involved, thank you for all the time and everything that you've done to help, you know, one of our signature events in our city. And finally, the Friends of the Parks, Berkeley Parks and Recreation are having their last meeting until September, so they don't meet over the summer. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Patrick J's. If you can't make it, we hope to see you at one of the many Summer Fest events, starting June 21st with the Tot Lot, Tot Lot Party from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. July 20th, JC Jamboree from 6:00 to 8:00. August 12th, we have our Family Movie in the Park, and August 29th, Ice Cream Social. You'll be hearing a lot more about those, but again, if you cannot attend, the final meeting tomorrow, we look forward to seeing you this summer. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
As Councilmember Terbrack noted, I did celebrate my one-year anniversary, so I do want to express once again my gratitude to the City Council for selecting me for this position. It's been a fantastic year, I look forward to the next 12 months worth of progress, and also to the residents of the city as well, for the opportunity to serve them, and in some cases, one-on-one, which is my attempted segueing to chat with Matt, which is, this Wednesday, we'll actually be inside this room, I'll be joined by the Finance Director, Suprema Lilia, to discuss the upcoming budget year, where that includes our goals, what we've been able to fund, some of the issues, and some of the sort of financial concerns we have on the horizon, as we make sure that we are being responsible stewards of the city's resources. That is, I believe, what, 6:30, 6? 6:00.
Not at a time.
Thank you. 6:00 in the, in this room here, so I look forward to having just hundreds of people join us. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item with the Fourth of July coming up, just a reminder that the use and discharge of fireworks is prohibited in the City of Berkeley, except for the day before, day of, and day after a national holiday. And additionally, at any time, use of or discharge of fireworks by minors is prohibited, not allowed, except under the direct supervision of an adult. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And one other update, the city manager had asked that I check the status of some litigation that was pending as it relates to the circulation, in some cases unsolicited, of newspaper flyers. There was a federal lawsuit that was pending in Detroit. That matter has been dismissed. The details of dismissal of that suit, I will have, if I'm not here at your next council meeting, John will be able to brief you as it relates to the specifics of the ability of municipalities to regulate those circulars.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for following up on that, because a lot of residents are concerned about that very matter. First item is, Councilmember Kadekell is not with us this evening, again, due to his